Seven, I report the members present.
Wilson.
Here.
Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Bevcock.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Morris.
Here. On to this consent agenda, the following items may be approved in their entirety by the board upon motion made, seconded, and passed by a majority. Any member may request a separate
If there's no ball, is there anything, I'll make the motion if we approve it.
I'm gonna pull something out, can I second it, and then with the exception, is that how that works? Isn't that right?
Um, if there's no second on this motion, then it doesn't go anywhere, so then another motion would be made to move it sometime.
Well, I'll make the motion when you've been approved, but I want to pull out appeal number ninety-two. What's that for?
For those markups.
Those what?
Markups.
What's that?
The markup of the handrail, and the bent of the tubing, all of that. That's what that's for.
So we spent money, we had to pay, we're not gonna use it though, right?
We made those two markups for us, and...
The two samples?
Yeah, the two samples. And that's just green version him for doing that for us.
Uh-huh. And now since you flagged that, do we discuss that later time, or what?
Well, we need to vote, because I made the motion, he seconded, approved, item ninety-two.
I agree.
So, we need to vote on that.
Are you gonna vote?
Yes.
Okay. Wilson?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Bevcock?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes. Now, item three then is item three for the consent agenda, back to the discussion. I didn't, I mean, I didn't know, how many markups he made?
Two.
Or Austin's one.
Austin, I wanted to see whether it would cost to have an electroplated, I sent it to Matt. It was the first one, that was too tall. The one you actually saw, the one you saw was...
Is A-Cell books a piece for them? How much is it?
That was for, that was for all. That was for shipping, that was for bringing from Tulsa, having them made. Twenty-seven a piece without freight, this was worth very...
So, they brought it from Tulsa?
Yes, it came, Lear's ordered it for us, and it came out of Tulsa, he had shipped
So what do we do now? Well, I was, I was under the impression they were making us a sample, and then gonna tell us how much it was to do it, not, you know, from then on.
Yeah, that's what we explained to us. When we put everything on hold, it was, I mean, it was, hey, we're going this way, yeah, we'll do this for you. But then said, okay, now everything's on hold, because we're gonna run this with the bond, then, hey, I need to get paid for the work I've already done for you.
That still doesn't make any sense to what Morris just said, though. Does it?
Not quite sure.
Well, yeah, I mean, I just thought that they were gonna make one up, and, you know, give us a cost of what it was going to be, and that's, hey, this is what it's gonna be if we make a whole bunch of them. I didn't know they were gonna charge.
Right, and that's what they did do. But then when we put all the project and everything on...
So now they're gonna charge. So it's not what they did. Right?
They were, that's what they were doing, and now that we've put everything on hold, they're like, okay, well, it's still gonna cost this cost.
If they built it to show us, or if they bent the piece of five to show us, you know, or tell us how much it's gonna cost, you get an idea. Then if we didn't wanna go that route anyway, we're still the same as putting it on hold, correct?
I would say yes.
Okay, so what do we do?
Well, it kinda was a special thing they did for us, though. I think, you know, obviously that, you know, if the customer wants to see something, you're gonna have to pay for the materials to make that.
Right. Yeah, I don't think we all understood what you were doing, which is why we thought building them a certain way instead of having them bent and everything else shipped off and all that'd be a lot better. So what we're doing with this, and I should go ahead and, we have to approve it, don't we?
You don't have to, but...
Well, if you don't, we'll have to.
Um, but they will pay.
So is table?
Table, is the guy gonna charge his interest on it too?
I haven't talked to him.
So we're just paying, get it over with, but don't...
He'll get his something.
Don't do nothing, like them, how you...
Is that agreement you made with him, then, and we pay if we ended up not going forward with that particular...
After Davy did most of that. I mean, I'd give Davy the plans, and he worked with Lear's. Afterwards, I'm assuming that was the conversation, because that's how it came back from Davy. Hey, now that we're not doing this, we need to pay him for his time and his work he has done.
It was eighty-seven, sixty for two, two of the rail, two of the handrails?
Yeah.
And that was like a sample for us to look at?
Correct.
I don't see any problem with paying to look into.
So are we getting both handrails back, or?
Can get it back from Matt once he gets it from this guy.
How about we pay for it and see how it works?
Yeah, we'll make that in a motion.
I can make that a motion?
Yeah.
By motion, if I can.
I'll second the motion.
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Bevcock?
Yes.
Reed?
Yeah.
Morris?
Yes. Item number four, then, is information before states, issue in this report.
Uh, we had our accreditation on here, about two weeks now ago, or last week, it was recent. Everything went great. Patricia and Tamara did a great job of collecting all the data that they looked at during that report.
Who was it up there?
I was crunching.
I'm sorry?
I was crunching. Who was it up there?
Uh, State Department for the accreditation. Every year you get accredited, to make sure you're following state law and doing everything right. So that went well, really good audit. It'll get finalized this month, and we'll have a hundred check accreditation, no deficiencies, no, nothing. So, really good. I need to know if you want to go to the April thirtieth, Region Two Board Member Meeting in Buffalo?
My credit?
Yeah.
I don't wanna go.
Is that three credits, is that what it...
If you go to the pre-conference, you can get three. If you go to this regular part, you can get two. But then there is a day, May fourth, it looks like they're combining these in Edmond for new board members workshop and board members workshop. They sent two flyers out, and I think I passed them along to you, and that's on May fourth. I need to know if you wanna go to that. That one does have a cost, the May thirtieth, or April thirtieth does not.
That's fifteen credits, is that right?
I have to look to make sure, it's either twelve or fifteen. It's a lot in one day.
Now, is that the...
No, you'll get six hours. Two open meetings, one legislation, one ethics, one finance, and one employment.
That's on a Saturday, isn't it?
Correct, Saturday, May fourth, at Edmond.
Well, I would like to go, because I need to get my credits, but anybody else?
I might be interested in going more over to Buffalo.
So, that was in Shane for the thirtieth, anybody else on the thirtieth?
What, is that on a Friday?
What day is that on?
April thirty, maybe. I don't know, they're always early in the week, but I could, I have a calendar.
It is...
Maybe you get your cell phone.
Yeah, Tuesday, April thirty.
Tuesday, April thirty.
Tuesday.
What's the next year? Do you wanna let me know, Phil?
Yeah, go ahead and put me down.
Okay.
What time will, is it six?
Uh, the pre starts at five-thirty, if I remember right. Did you find that? I know the dinners are six-thirty, and then they usually have two afterwards, so it's usually five-thirty. I don't know, I'm sure I'll have to confirm. Yeah, it's five-thirty right there.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead and put me down for that.
All right. Finance update, if we're good, ready to move on? You should have a form, a document in there. I've seen this before, it's just that kind of projection. We are currently above, estimating above our estimate needs, which is figured on ninety percent of last year's revenue. We are currently bringing in three point four percent above the estimate needs, or that's what they, that's what we're projecting. We should have a carryover around five-thirty-five in general fund, and just a little other hundred in building fund, and child nutrition is always to break even. So that's kinda where we are financially. And legislation. There is a ton of bills going through right now. Probably the most one, or two bills to probably note for us are the bill to increase teacher pay again by twelve hundred dollars. So that would impact us. And then there is another bill, which it's really early, but we don't know what it's going to do yet, that will change the funding formula. That one makes me really nervous, because you can't really work the numbers, because it works on a state level, and if you don't have all the state data, you really don't know what it's gonna do to your district. We can project all we want and guesstimate, and I'm in the process of doing that right now. But I'm having to contact the state and ask them where they get some of the data from, to be able to run my own calculation as best I can, to see what that impact could be on our district. Basically, a lot of it changes every, the weights of every child. Where some children are early childhood, receive an extra two tenths of a weight, that goes away, goes straight to just a straight one. Actually, everything goes to a straight one. So it's, it will lower our weights across the state. But how will it fully impact, we don't know yet. So, we won't know that probably till May, what, if it gets passed, or how it gets passed, or what version gets passed. So, that's a, that's a bill that I'm tracking pretty regularly to see what's gonna happen, because it could drastically change some things. We won't know until it gets here.
What do they vote on that, or when is that?
At any time. It's already passed one body, it's in the other body now. It passed the Senate, it's in the House, and I think it's passed out of committee, and I don't think it's been heard on the floor yet. So it's waiting to be heard on the floor. And I think they're waiting to find out the financial impact across the state on schools before it gets heard. That's the last I was told about it. So, that's all I have.
The first thing I have is the annual dropout report in college remediation. This information is actually two thousand sixteen-seventeen data, given us from the state regions of higher education. It tells us the number of students that went to college that year, this is their freshman year, and how many of those students actually had to go into remediation classes. We had seven students that went into college, four of them had no remediation whatsoever, three students did, and all three of those had at least two areas where they had to be remediated. Math was the main area that everybody, all of those three, had to be in that specific one. The others are spread out over different subjects. So, it tells us that we probably need to be working on math, which we already knew from our test data that we've gotten the last few years, so...
How many students?
Seven, is what it shows.
We have seven that passed last, or seven that...
Evidently, there were seven freshmen from Freedom in college in two thousand sixteen-seventeen. I have no idea who they were, it doesn't say. It could have been somebody that graduated the year before but waited a year to go to college. I mean, I don't know who they would have been, so. It doesn't give you a whole lot of information on that. And like I said, it's down on information that I don't even know who they were, and wouldn't know them because I wasn't here during that time, even if I did. So, you guys would, but we don't have to anyway. Next thing I wanna talk about is testing. We have started, it's gone real smooth so far. We've had three tests that have been given. Tomorrow we do the ACT and another reading test. If everything goes smooth tomorrow, we are way over the hump as far as testing goes, because ACT is a big one. So, I'm looking forward to that. We do have a gentleman from Bank Central, almost said Central National Bank, from Bank Central, that will be coming in to make sure that all of our computer stuff runs correctly, and we're on target with that, so we don't have any issues. So, he'll be in. Lots of events this month, we have several more coming up. We have prom on April the thirteenth. I think you guys probably got invitations on that. If you didn't, you're more than welcome to come to that event. FFA convention is April thirtieth to May second. We have no school on April nineteenth, that's also Good Friday, we are out that day. We have Ag Safety Day, which is in Alba on April twenty-fourth, and the elementary students will have the opportunity to attend Alba Little Olympics this year. We've set that up to where we can go there and do that, and that's on the third of May. Then we have the Sports banquet on May ninth, and on May tenth, we have a talent show. We do a one o'clock matinee and a seven o'clock that evening. After the talent show, the matinee version, the students and teachers are gonna do a Mother's Day thing with, not with the moms, doing cookies and juice in their room. So, that's pretty much everything on that. So, it's gonna be a very, very busy month, so.
I see.
Any questions, anything? Nope, that's it.
All right. Item five then is general. Item A is update and possible discussion for action regarding strategic planning.
Some of this was, you've got this in there, and I'll keep updating. If you see something blind cross through, that means it's been completed. I kept trying to think of a way to make notations where you can see how this changes. We should have, we're pouring concrete tomorrow, that's on another item, so on the Aglo on the West. We've begun with partnership with the State Department, which I'll talk about a little more later, so on the individualized instruction, marrying Marzano's, that's part of this, one of these processes we're working on. So that's already begun, and we're currently evaluating. Tomorrow I'll meet with teachers and ask them to evaluate two different curriculums or two different books to go through to implement next year of the soft skills curriculum and character development, and taking ownership in your education, and some things that we kinda see that's needed with our student population. So, we're kinda in the middle of that. Everything else is, most everything else is pretty much waiting on a, on the bond on the fourteenth.
Should we move on from that side?
Right, unless there's discussion.
Does anybody discuss anything on that?
Some reason.
Item B then is discussion concerning partnership with OKSD for continuous improvement model.
About a decade ago, since it was started, the state partnered with Marzano to research schools in Oklahoma of what is needed to make real change in your district, what is needed in Oklahoma. Through that research, there was three different studies, I think it was literally over a ten-year period, they've come up with nine essential elements.
Excuse me?
I'm sorry. Come up with nine essential elements to look at in your district and to evaluate. Part of this process, this partnership that we're, got with them, over the next three years, we will have fifty thousand dollars a year, plus a twenty-five thousand dollar infusion to help us work through this process, to pay for, like this, buying the books, buying, getting professional development, getting, paying for some of the costs of the surveys, paying for conferences, paying for things that we eventually get identified of, you know, our kids need this, our school needs this, to help us implement those things over the next three years. So we'll get a total of a hundred and seventy-five thousand. We've already got twenty-five thousand, actually, I just gotta notice it was twenty-six and some change. The total's gonna be twenty-five, but now it's twenty-six. And then we'll have fifty next year to invest in that, and then fifty the year after, and fifty the year after. So, we're gonna be sending out a lot of, today's students went home with the parent letter thing.
The one that went home today was a permission. If they don't sign it, that means they're, the kids have permission to take the survey, because we had to have parent permission for them to take it before we could give it to them. So, not filling it out is a good thing, because that means I get all that student input. And I told all the students today that, when I was talking to them, that it's very important that we have their input, because we need to know what they think and how they feel about the school, and where they think we need help, I mean, areas that we need to improve, so.
So don't sign it.
Don't sign it.
Then why send it home?
Don't sign it. Because there are some people that are afraid that their...
Don't read it immediately.
Yeah, yeah. Well, they're afraid that their kid will get put in some little group or something, and so they don't do it.
In a small school.
I know, I know. So, it's just something the State Department, through this agreement, says that we have to do with that. I mean, they have certain hoops we have to jump through to do it, and, you know, so we have to follow those steps and make sure they're done, so.
There's, there'll be a parent one coming out. There's, we're gonna do one of the teachers here real soon, send that out. There's already one for administrators.
Talking surveys?
Yes.
It's the, it's the collect, it's the basis of the data to begin to take this leadership committee, this leadership team that we put together. What should we be looking at as identified by our stakeholders, our parents, our community, our, our students, our staff? What should we do next? Where should, what do we need to be looking at, rather than us just assuming we know, asking for the input, which I think is a good, good first step.
Is that all on that theme?
We do have a celebration night.
Thank you. I told you, I told the reminders, don't ever forget that.
On April the twenty-third, at six o'clock, we're gonna do a celebration night. All of our testing will be over, so we're gonna celebrate that. And we're also going to have electronics out where parents can actually take that survey here, if they choose to do that. So, there is also a QR code that you can use your phone, or iPad, or whatever, and pull it up and take it on those devices as well, if you have those of your own. We wanna make sure everybody has ample opportunity to take the survey.
Okay, then IMC is discussion of possible action to purchase basketball uniforms, shooting tops, and other equipment.
Chair, chairs?
Oh, we need chairs.
Coach Rankin has worked to get, I feel is a pretty good quote, I've asked him to get one from Compass, and I don't know if we've gotten it back yet. But our high school varsity basketball uniforms are getting a little tattered, and they're six, seven years old, I believe.
At least seven, I think, if I counted, yeah.
So, the quote he did get is from Midwest for twelve uniforms, both boys and girls, and tops and bottoms. Comes out to twenty-seven fifteen. He's in the process of getting quotes for shooting tops, and...
Shooting top?
Shooting tops.
It's kinda like a warm-up outfit. It's what they used to be back when I was in school. They all wore the warm-ups over there.
Yeah.
Now they do the shooting top.
Now they call it a shooting top up, with, with your jersey.
Right. They call the shooting top, it's warming up. And then this year, the, the official basketball was the Wave. Well, they're no longer going to make the Wave, so every school in the entire state gets to buy new basketballs. They're about seventy-eight, seventy-nine dollars a piece, and talking Rankin, we need, it's gonna come to about a thousand dollars to buy all those basketballs. It's, you can use the old one in your gym here, but when you get to districts, you're gonna have a completely different ball. So it's for...
The new one is lighter or heavier?
I don't know, it's a different manufacturer making a different ball, and it's what the state's adopted, so.
And round?
And it'll have the curves in it, like the Wave does.
I have no idea.
It has those little...
Is it round?
Yeah.
Does it go through the hoop? It's a basketball.
So it's gonna cost roughly about a thousand dollars to buy the new balls. We've got the ideal uniforms, so I'd like to go ahead and move forward with making a purchase in this price range, but...
I'll make the motion approve.
I wanna know one for a second. Are the girls' uniforms gonna say Girls on them?
I don't believe so, I think it just says Freedom.
Because you saw that script that we had this year, the boy running around that said Group, Lady Eagles?
Yes.
I'm not sure that'll happen again.
I think they just say Freedom.
My biggest concern with them is, I wanna make sure there is a process in place that every year these uniforms get back. And I know everybody's heard me gripe about that.
I agree.
I've been around, I mean, there's been uniforms, cheerleading uniforms, this uniform, that uniform, purchased, and purchased, and purchased. And I'm all for us needing them. I want our kids to have the best, but if we come in here next year, well, we need another... And I'm, I'm all for us needing them, I want our kids to have the best, but they, if, if we come in here next year, well, we need another twenty-seven hundred dollars for the uniforms, if we don't have them, I'm going to lose it, and that's, you know. But I would like to see what Compass can do for us, because they're local and.
How many uniforms?
Twenty-four total.
Per, oh, yeah, twenty-four total, twelve boys, twelve girls, that's tops and bottoms.
And shooter.
Well, the shooting, the shooter tops, when I was talking to Rankin last, we don't have a hard number on it, they're about thirty dollars apiece.
They surely don't take those uniformed phones, do they?
Some end up with them at home, not on purpose, but they leave a game and it ends up in their bag. They're supposed to come here, we wash them, but if they don't take it off or something happens, they're supposed to come back. And we've found them lots of different places, they randomly show back up.
What are we gonna do with the old uniforms?
They'll go down junior high, they'll go down.
Down to junior high, okay. Want to take these falling off by some of our junior high students? Pretty much the same seizure we had for years then.
You did? Russell seconded.
Some years they would sell them to the students that wanted them on the jerseys.
Can I just clarify what your motioning, is it for all of it, or just the uniforms?
What we discussed here is the twenty-seven fifteen, and then, didn't you say about a grand for the basketballs?
Yeah.
And then how much for the?
The shooting tops are about thirty apiece, about, we don't have a hard number on them.
I wouldn't approve that one.
Is it a hard number? It didn't sound like any of them were really hard number.
The, well, if we wanted to not get, not wait on the quote from Compass, that purchase from Midwest would be, that's a, that is a quote.
So if they approve that, is that the one they have to go with? Or are you just approving the purchase of uniforms?
If you approve it, in that price range, if we get a better price from Compass or somebody else, another bid, if you don't mind switching vendors, it's that, yeah, you can go ahead and purchase this, this is what we're expecting.
They protect the best bidder. If this one's low, it's fine, the other guy is, well, it's dark Charlie.
The quality is the same.
Yeah.
So then uniforms, basketballs, and that's it, right?
Okay.
Okay, ready to vote?
Do we want any shoes?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Yes.
Bedcock?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Item six is transportation, discussion and possible action to repair the number four transmission.
Transmission went out. They got three different options, getting one from salvage yard that had just a little under ninety thousand miles. And having it put in would be arriving around eighteen hundred dollars. Got a bid from, what was the name of that place?
Booker Transmission.
Booker. Would take ours out, turnkey twenty-two hundred dollars, and it would have a year warranty on it, twelve thousand miles a year warranty. And then obviously there's the direct manufacturer, GM, which is three-year, hundred thousand mile warranty for, about thirty-five to four. That was kind of a guesstimate from.
How big one else is on the vehicle?
A little over two.
Two hundred and thirty, forty thousand, something like that.
Two thirty-four.
You know more about the car stuff than we do, what would you?
I can tell you about Kevin, Kevin does good work. Kevin Booker, Booker Transmissions, he does.
That's a rebuild one?
That's a rebuild one. Yeah, yeah. He will stand behind his stuff, I mean, I, I've used Kevin, he will stand behind his stuff. The remanufacture, if you get one from, like the dealer, which, if he was pricing it that way, you have to look at Jasper and ATK, something like that, just because the warranty, the three-year, hundred thousand mile warranty is great with Chevrolet, unless you're not a certified mechanic who puts it in, and then if you do have a problem, it's a fight to get into warranty, whereas a Jasper or an ATK, they pretty much will repair it, you know, they'll pretty much take care of it if it's, if there's an warranty issue, but. Kevin's price is solid, and I trust him, I mean, I, so it's, that's, this is kinda.
That's what the year is guaranteed.
Yeah, it's a year guarantee, yeah.
Personally, I would think the rebuild would be the best way to go.
Say a year or twelve thousand miles, right?
Correct.
And they're getting kinda high mollys.
Which Suburban is number four?
The oldest one, yeah.
Number six?
What's that?
I think two thousand and six.
Is that the one?
It's the old body style.
Didn't that one have a motor put in it also though?
No. We've used transmission before.
Was it? How many miles, how long one did that?
Ninety-three thousand, nine-four thousand.
Four thousand.
Chevrolet, you put it in?
He drives us all the time.
I like the motion, repair it.
With, which one?
Booker.
I agree. Rebuild?
Yeah.
Second it? Too late, or, oh, okay, sorry. I didn't hear you. I thought you said yeah.
So I agree.
I agree it's not the second.
Wilson?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Bedcock?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes. B is discussion of possible action to purchase state surplus vehicle at auction April twelfth, two thousand nineteen.
Every year, every few months, the state goes through and purchases some vehicles. Right now, we always send a Suburban everywhere, even if it's just one teacher. It would be useful to have a small, fuel-efficient car that we could send a teacher or two to the city or something like that. I've provided you the list in your book, you can see what's coming up on this auction for sale. I've already reached out to them, we would actually be able to possibly buy before auction, because we are a public school. They were supposed to try to get me prices by today, I've got three of them that have already been spoken for by another state agency, but they may not take them, they have until Wednesday to say yes or no. You, if we just, if we call and say we want it, they have first choice, we'd have second choice. So the ones I'm recommending is exactly what I buy, it's where I got mine three years ago. These Chevy Impalas, they have, you know, under, lowest I think was a hundred and thirteen thousand miles, and the highest was a hundred and.
Are these coming out of the state motor pool?
State, and they're under, and they're under the fleet manager, their register.
From the state motor pool?
Yeah. These are, specifically, these are coming out of O M E S.
Well, I was working for the state, we bought a couple vehicles that's from the state motor pool, had no problems with them. Yeah, fairly well maintained there.
I've had very little problems with mine.
Do you want those for a?
Small number, anybody, anything, so we don't have to send a.
Gas guzzling bus.
Sixteen mile, half gallon.
How many miles do you think we'd put on the vehicle that every year, or something like that?
I really have no idea. How many miles would we put on a vehicle that year? Mr. Webber, do you have any idea?
I'd guess by around fifteen, twenty thousand.
Per vehicle?
Well, I mean, if you say a single teacher's sending twenty trips, all of them figured by fifteen, twenty thousand.
What kinda price range?
The two thousand nine, number eighteen, if you see that number. It is priced at twenty-eight fifty. The two thousand nine, item number thirty-six. Two thousand eight hundred and fifty. Item thirty-six is three grand, and the two thousand ten, item number thirty-seven is twenty-nine seventy-five. But remember, those are, the reason I got those, they already have a bid on them. Or they were already offered to another agency, but if they back out, and those are the ones we want, we would be second.
I'd say thirty-six would be, we could get it.
Thirty-six, yeah.
Eighteen would be second. How many alternatives do you want?
For me, any of the Impalas to me would work, I mean, I drive one every day. They're good cars, I can fit in them, don't put anybody behind me. And they get mine, I get twenty-five, twenty-seven on the highway, so it gets good gas mileage, and they're comfortable.
You know, that time I had this like a packet car for a teacher that broke down or nothing like that?
No, this is just, instead of having to always send a Suburban.
Just for school purposes?
Yeah. Right, yeah, just like a middle school vehicle.
What's the dollar amount in the top? If we wanna do this, we, how many, what's reasonable?
Three thousand?
Yeah, three thousand?
Three?
Three?
What'd you say?
Three thousand five hundred and nine?
That's what, the prices I gave you, we would get some kinda price like that. I don't have the prices on thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-eight, 'cause they haven't gotten to me yet. They should be in that range.
Thirty-five you said was, three?
Thirty-eighty-six, thirty-six was three.
That's because somebody's already put a bid of three thousand on it?
No, that's, some of their agent, when you buy from state surplus like this, they just tell us, this is the price we'll take for it.
Oh, okay.
And if you don't want it, then it just goes through the auction, and sometimes it goes lower, sometimes it goes higher, you never know, through an auction.
Yeah, I'd say three.
For that number thirty-six?
I'm sorry?
For thirty-six you're saying, or?
No, three on cap. Go by the first, second, or third ultimate, and go with three.
I don't know, that number you said told us on the other ones.
No more than three on, but would any of them work if, say, all three of those that I've already told you the price on, they've, that agency wants them, we would be left with looking at thirty-four, thirty-five, or thirty-eight?
Well, the mileage is about between a hundred and eighteen thousand and a hundred and thirty thousand on them, so there's about too much difference.
The, the, the three that are left have a little bit more. The ones with a hundred and twenty-eight, one's a hundred and nineteen, and another one's a hundred and twenty-nine, but they should be less expensive, should be. I mean, we're talking ten thousand.
The difference between a hundred and thirteen and a hundred and thirty thousand miles in the big picture of it is not a lot.
No, but it still should be cheaper than the three. That's where I, I think.
Okay, so I'll say this one, and then go with three.
So you wanna make that as an emotion?
I'll make that a motion.
Wilson?
All, uh. All I'm saying is, I don't think we should pay three for one they said we can get for twenty-seven fifty or twenty-eight fifty.
I agree.
They'll, they'll come with a, whatever, they'll tell me what are the price of the other ones are. We know that the lowest mileage, one supposedly, I guess would be the nicest is three grand.
Right.
If it goes over that, then obviously no.
I'd say yes to get none for three grand, and the others for the price you said, that's what I'd say yes to.
Well, the ones that we know, but what about the ones that we don't know? That's, I think, what a three grand cap is, if it comes back, well, you know what I'm saying?
Then everyone to auction. Yes, well, the ones we doesn't go to price on, it, I can't remember, I looked at, at the prices on the Friday, or the mileage and all that stuff, but are, are they newer or older than the ones that, that you know the price is on, or they're about the same?
They're all within a year.
Okay.
One way or another, two thousand seven, eight, nine, ten.
Should be approximately the same as the ones, the prices that we know about, is that probably? Or is that what I'm thinking, you're thinking?
Yeah.
Okay. So, three now, it covers everyone, but the, the one they wanted thirty-six for?
There wasn't one thirty-six.
Is anybody gonna look at them first, or?
That's what, that's what going on Friday is about, is before we'd say a hundred percent, yes, 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 already scheduled with Davy.
So you said?
Yes.
Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Bedcock?
Yeah.
Reed?
Yeah.
Morris?
Yes.
Item number seven is building, A is update and possible discussion of bond projects and schedule.
So you should have that in your book, it's the same thing you had before, I just crossed out the things we've already done. We're available for building, building tours if any of our community wants them. We've compiled voter information, we're gonna work with teachers tomorrow to go through that and create call lists, and got the taxpayer history. Think some of that's already been delineated to you guys. Obviously, we're not discussing tonight, on says here for construction methods, that will be moved to the May, bond, the May board meeting. But you can kinda see, I've contacted the town, I've talked to Shad about making a presentation, ask him to support a resolution to support us in this endeavor, and we haven't heard back on yet, so, that's kinda where we are. Michelle, do you remember the exact date? I can't remember at the moment, I know I sent it out, is it the sixteenth last day to register the vote?
Uh, you did send it out.
I did, I can't remember right now.
It's in that, I was thinking fifteen through sixteen.
So, the last day to register votes coming up pretty soon.
Yeah, it looks like I don't know where he's going, so that's why it's not great, why don't we still bring?
Item B then is update discussion concerning ag electric and concrete projects.
So the, all the electrics been done, I think, Ms. Webber, you've got everything moved back where it now works, and.
Yes, I think they had to come out, do one more, practical, they'll, they didn't hope the light and storage room.
Right.
So it's not completed yet?
It's scheduled, I don't know if he's.
Yes, it is scheduled, but hasn't made it there yet.
Might, might I ask Webber a question?
Yeah.
I didn't know, 'cause I was on the board right now. Did they fill those boxes covered back up?
There are two boxes we're still gonna get coverage on, just small boxes, there are two up in the, Brian and I noticed the other day.
Okay, I didn't know that, he didn't tell me that.
That's April nineteenth, for the last day of the register.
So what all needs done? No any boxes covered down, or what else?
That's it, that I've noticed.
And Davy's pouring concrete tomorrow, that's scheduled, he'll be here the first day in the morning.
He gonna do all the finish work himself, I think, that's what we talked about. He has bolt posts and all that?
So the lights and the boxes, so he knows, the electrician does know about all those.
I know he knows about the lights, I didn't know if it, that had been relayed.
It was to him on the north wall.
Do you, you know Davy has?
I'm pretty sure he relayed it to him.
I figured.
Item C then is discussion of possible action to repair the ag building east overhead door.
This is the existing one, when it was open, somehow it shifted, and when it came down, it got crooked, and barely got closed.
Messed up the track?
Oh, all kinds of stuff. You've got a bid in here, we asked Matt to come look at it, you've got his bid in here as well.
Twelve hundred and fifty.
That was the, Matt's was considerably higher. But asked Davy, I said, we gotta have something else, look at somebody else, he called and contacted B's quality door.
Where's that at?
Enid. And you can see what they're gonna come in here and do, basically repair everything the way Davy told them, and go ahead and bolt through and plate through the walls, you know, some things that we, we talked about wanting to do. When it was originally put in, repair the cables. And just get it back and make it stronger than what it is now.
What exactly happened?
It got, it got crooked and.
You told us that, well, how, well, how did it get crooked, I mean?
When it was up, it shifted somehow.
When was it opened? Who opened it?
It was during, when the electrician was here doing the work, both doors were open.
Were the doors open, had a cross trees?
Well, I assume, I don't know, I wasn't here. But when he pushed the button to have it come down, it came off the track and couldn't barely, could barely get it down. But when he pushed the button to have it come down, it came off the track and couldn't barely, could barely get it down. See it through some of the casters, I guess you'd call them, off and then it was stuck. And then when it finally did come down, it busted the cables on the springs. Springs looked fine, last I knew. Because it's not on the list to be replaced here.
So American Iron is nine thousand seven twenty-eight sixty-seven?
Yes.
And this B's Quality Door is nine hundred and ninety-five dollars?
Yes. They're not exactly quoting the same thing, though. The nine thousand is to do what we did on the west door. But just because of the sheer cost of that.
Why did we have them bid it like that then?
That's what Davy and them talked about, coming, that, because that's how they wanted to do, repair that, to do it just like that side. And when Dave looked at it and said, hmm, can't afford that, what can we do? That's when he came back with this and said, this will work.
That that would prevent from getting crossways again on there?
He thought, he thought a lot of that other was unnecessary. But some things need to be done, and that's what's in this one.
So does he want to make a bid based on just what we absolutely need, or does he just think that we need all of this and that's the only way?
From my understanding from Davy is this was what they wanted to do and that was it.
So Davy's actually doing this job?
Yes.
These are B overhead doors, just to install the door after he finishes up with his arm work.
No. They're doing the arm work and everything. They're doing, they're doing it all.
And didn't damage the bottom panel of that door when it came down?
Not that I know of.
Which is that Brian thought that we could get by with just repairing that with that B's Quality Door?
Yes.
I had one break, one of the springs on me and it came down. I don't know whether the wind caught it or something, but it somehow bent one of the rails. And a couple of wheels got out and went flying off across the shop and broke the spring. And all we did was replace that track, we even what the caster wheels needed replaced and, and bought a spring and we did all the work itself. Not that hard.
So it sounds like Davy's wanting to go to B. Is that, what's your recommendation?
That's, my recommendation is Davy's recommendation, go to B's.
I'll make a motion for Davy's recommendation for B, or, or the doors. Some of that's back in it. Hardest part was getting attention back on that spring.
Wilson?
Yes.
For Patrick?
Yes.
Bevcock?
Yes.
Reed? Morris?
Yes.
Item number A is finance. A is discussion and possible action to schedule a special board meeting for presentation of the annual fiscal audit, or financial audit, excuse me.
It has to be done before the thirtieth. The auditor won't have his, he was here, he went through everything. Everything was fine. He's doing the last little parts of it, going back through it. But he will need to present to the board. The twenty-second. Let me check my calendar to make sure it's the right date. If that works for you guys' schedule, and it needs to be a noon meeting. There it is.
That must be the Thursday.
The twenty-second works for him, but he could also possibly do the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth, but you're getting, we're getting a little close on time to get it turned in to the state. Twenty seconds, Monday to twenty-second. Would y'all be able to have a special meeting at noon on the twenty-second? Monday the twenty-second. Would you have, be able to have a special meeting on Monday the twenty-second?
Yeah, if you have no problem with that.
Maybe it should just be a couple minutes.
I'm going to make a motion for that, please.
Can. Just to schedule it.
So a motion to schedule a meeting for twenty-second at noon.
Second.
Wilson?
Yes.
For Patrick?
Yes.
Bevcock?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Item B is discussion and possible action to approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty board resolution for the, for schools and libraries, universal services, E-rate. The resolution authorizes the funding of the two thousand nineteen, twenty payments of the applicant's share upon approval of funding and receipt of services.
We're still waiting on U Sac. We thought we'd have it today. We don't. So we'll have to, this, no action, take care of this in May.
Item nine then, personnel. A is discussion and possible action concerning superintendent's travel schedule.
There is one change. I'm, tomorrow's meeting with the state board member, General Baxter, has been canceled. He's got the floor, so I'm not going to be going to it tomorrow.
Do you want to make a motion on that, Andy Dury?
If you want to make it, you can. I mean, it's just, I'm giving you, I always give you the option.
All right. Item B then is proposed executive session to discuss the employment of those listed on appendix B in accordance with provision of Oklahoma statute twenty-five, section three oh seven, B one. I make the motion to go into executive session at seven fifty-seven.
Second.
Wilson?
Yes.
For Patrick?
Yes.
Bevcock?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
I didn't pick your room yet.
Acknowledgement of board's return to open session at eight thirty-five. Executive session, compliance announcements, all the things discussed were in item B. No votes taken. C then is discussion and possible action concerning the employment of the employees listed on appendix B for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year.
Recommendation would be to retain our teaching staff.
So over. One more second. Second.
Wilson?
Yes.
For Patrick?
Yes.
Bevcock?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Item, B then is discussion and possible action to approve leadership team stipends listed in appendix C.
This is the leadership team that, for our partnership with the state for that grant. They're, they're required to meet at least, at least once a week. Through, right now they're saying bi-weekly. But there's a lot of extra outside time that is having to be done with this, lots of extra.
I believe we have approved through appendix C.
Second.
Who are you putting that down to?
Uh, for Patrick.
I bid you, babe.
He was actually louder than him this time. Wilson?
Yes.
For Patrick?
Yes.
Bevcock?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Item ten then is new business?
Yes, I got a call today, so it qualifies as a new business. From the alumni group, would like to use the gym again. This is auditorium this year. For the alumni, think with...
No problem with it.
Make a motion.
One second.
Wilson?
Yes.
For Patrick?
Yes.
Bevcock?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Are they bringing that on the medway thing?
Yes, second.
And item eleven then is for that sign?
Yes. Is that before the, is that before the voting?
Mr. Egan, yeah.
Can we put up sign with the say please vote?
That's all I can say.
I'm just saying that all those people are going to be there. Yeah.
One couple of this, my brother will be here, there, and he votes and wait, go take.
Well, you know, some people will be still come here.
Hopefully my oldest brother will be here. You have any hearts?
Yes.
Blood pressure going up and down and around. That's why Wilson got started, started by slow now.
Nice view. Still Dr. Stetson.
Stephen L. Smith. No, just stop right there. Item number twelve then is to adjourn. Making a motion, we adjourn at eight forty.
Wilson?
I'm staying.
I will give you another chance, Wilson. For Patrick?
Yes.
Bevcock?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Yes.